Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Westmont for May 6, 2013. Tonight is our regular voting meeting and also the swearing-in of our new officials. So we're very excited about tonight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Here.
Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebanow?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
The clerks here. Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Ziminek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss is absent tonight. Public Works Director May?
He's waving out in the hallway.
Finance Director Parker?
He's also waving.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther?
Waving.
Staff Accountant Carlton?
He's there.
Deputy Fire Chief Connolly?
Here.
Oh, there he is. Acting Community Development Director Malik? Human Resource Director Casey? They're all out in the hall. Yeah, Administrative Assistant Makarsky? I know she's here.
Here, sorry.
Deputy Clerk and Collector Kamek? My right arm. Clerk DeTillo? She's here. Community Development Assistant Peterson? I know she was out there.
She's out there, I see her.
And Library Director Coon?
Also here. Is that everybody? I think we got them all.
Got them all.
If you'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First of all, I would just like to say thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and welcome. It's great to see some very familiar faces. It's wonderful to see so many supporters of trustees who have completed their service with the village and of the newly-elected officials coming in as well. So, thank you very, very much for coming and we will have a very nice evening and program. That is all I have this evening. Clerk?
I just want to remind everybody that Friday will be the Electronics Recycling at Ty Warner Park. It starts at 7:00 in the morning and continues to 1:00 PM. Ty Warner Park Electronics Recycling. So, that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
You sure?
Yeah. I promise, I'm done.
Attorney Ziminek?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Manager Searle?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the outgoing board members for the opportunity to work with you. Lee, Pat, and Ellen. Wish Mayor Ron could be here as well, but as we know, he retired a number of months ago. It's been a real pleasure and I'm looking forward, and staff is looking forward, to working with the new board members. And we have a rather lengthy agenda and I've been asked to read two proclamations, but I have to do it under 20 seconds?
About 15.
No, on the consent agenda, we have two proclamations this evening, so I'll read these for the benefit of the public. The first one is for EMS Week, to designate the week of May 19th to 25, 2013, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, I therefore, Suzanne Seneca, Mayor Pro Tem, Westmont, Illinois, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim, May 19th through May 25th, 2013, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS More Than a Job, a Calling. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So, we want to read this. This will be on the consent agenda for approval in just a few minutes. And keeping, again, with the theme of the tremendous value of service that we get from our public safety personnel, the other one is National Police Week, which is May 13th through May 19th, and this also honors Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15th. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Westmont Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Village of Westmont, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police officers, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocents against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Westmont Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore, I Suzanne Seneca, Mayor Pro Tem of the Village of Westmont, call upon all citizens of Westmont to observe the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2013, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commensing, commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities, security of all residents. I further call upon all residences of Westmont to observe Friday, May 15th, 2013, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those whose law enforcement officers, who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Emery.
Second, Fleming.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes. Unfinished business. Fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Board to consider a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Klebanow.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes. New business. 101 North Washington Street, Secula variance approval requests. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Lane Secula for building additions in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District. Number one, zoning code variance to allow the construction of a front porch with an existing non-conforming front yard setback, and number two, zoning code variance to allow the construction of a rear addition with an existing non-conforming setback in a side yard adjoining a street.
Motion to approve both one and two. Emery.
Second, Fleming.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. 128 South Cass Avenue, The Barber Shop Special Use. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Crystal Pacheco of The Barber Shop to allow the operation of a barber shop on the ground floor in the B1 Limited Business District. Number one, a special use permit, and number two, a development permit. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve both one and two. Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee... Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Thank you. Revisions to the Village of Westmont Municipal Code. Board to consider an ordinance revising Article 2, Fire Department, Section 42-31 and Section 42-32 of the Westmont Fire Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee... Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Thank you. Hiring freeze. Board to consider a motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze for the sole purpose of hiring up to 10 paid-on-call, part-time firefighter slash paramedics.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes. Declaration of Surplus Property. Board to consider an ordinance declaring the well structure at well site number nine as surplus property.
For the last time, motion approved, Emery.
Second, Fleming.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Yes. I'll just mention that before Trustee Emery came on the board, we would blurt out, "Motion second," and lots of times the clerk couldn't, you know, we did it so quickly sometimes, she couldn't figure out who it was and said it. So, it was by Trustee Emery's suggestion that we now say our name with the motion. So, thank you for that.
So she doesn't have to keep looking up and trying to figure out?
That is a tradition that we'll live on.
Now I'll have to, the men will have to do it. I think I can differentiate her voice. With the men, we'll have to announce themselves.
Oh wait, yeah, that's right. That's right. That's right. So now, before we actually recess, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank and honor our outgoing trustees. So, with that, we have, you know, as they say, parting gifts. Can I get this out of here? I'll give you this one. You don't have to tear your hands apart. There we go. Okay. And this one, and of course, you know, I'm going to make you guys walk up here. Okay. And the first one is for Lee Fleming. The Village of Westmont honors Lee Fleming as a commission member for planning and zoning from 2000 to 2001, and is a village trustee on the village board from 2001 to 2013, 2013, in recognition of over 13 years of dedicated service to the community. May retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many happy years of pleasure. May 2013, and signed by myself and our village clerk, Virginia Simmski, and thank you.
Thank you. Sure you're welcome.
(applause) We always wish each other a birthday, happy birthday. So anyway, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure serving with you and I know you won't be a stranger. We expect you back at the podium on multiple occasions.
Join you more in three minutes. Can I bank it?
No, because we have 18 minutes, okay? The Village of Westmont honors Patricia Klebanow, Commission Member on Planning Commission, 1991 to 1995, Village Trustee on the Village Board, 1997 to 2001, and again, 2005 to 2013, in recognition of over 16 years of dedicated service to the community. May retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many happy years of pleasure. And thank you for everything. The Village of Westmont honors Ellen Emery, Trustee Village Board, 2009 to 2013, in recognition of four years of dedicated service to the community. May retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many happy years of pleasure. May 2013.
Retirement?[943.95][943.95](laughter)
Yeah, she's already told us. She'll be at the podium like, "Happy Birthday." And we're ready. We are so ready. Thank you. Would our departing trustees care to make any comments?
Go ahead, ladies, I'll go last.
Well, since I am the youngest, except for Steve, I mean, the youngest of the retiring trustees, and I put everything on a piece of paper this big so that I would try to be quick about it.
That would be a first, yes.
I know, it's a miracle. Four years went very quickly for me. I'm sure there's people that were like, "2013, get here." But I accomplished a great deal of what I set out to accomplish. There are one TIF district in, ready to go, and the other, good to go. So there are two TIF districts that we're looking at and a comprehensive plan, and a lot of big plans are coming that are in the works and you'll find out about them soon, And there's a lot of people I'd like to thank, and a couple of things that I want to disclose, and one of them is that the sanctity of the executive session was honored by all, except for the fact that I'm allowed to say that despite what anybody on the street may have ever heard or have ever thought about what goes on in there, much to, I think, all of our surprise and all of our delight, we really worked as one body back there. There were no, you know, catfights, infighting, any of that. It was almost like, it was unbelievable. All differences were set aside and we got done a lot of things as one. We never had to talk about who's got the majority vote and all that. So, I will disclose that because I am extremely honored to have been part of this board that was able to accomplish those things and in that manner. I'd like to thank my husband, he's over here. He put up with a lot of things, especially like, "I'm going to get off the train and go to the meeting, see about 11:30." He's the one that got a lot of my signatures for me and delivered a lot of stuff when I ran, so he stood behind me even when he was like, "Again." And for the people who voted for me, I still thank you, and the people who volunteer in this town, it just amazes me, including Mr. Westmont. I'm so glad he's here, John Ziblis, and that he's doing well. But, you know, all the people that you see at all the functions, and a lot of them are here tonight, you go above and beyond and it just amazes me with the time that, and the effort that you put in. It's truly amazing. The village employees, you will never know how much you are appreciated. Whenever we had a discussion about anything that was going to affect the budget or going to affect a department, whenever an employee's name came up, no matter who it was, we all knew who you were and what you did and your value to this community, which is why I am so happy that unanimously, we, despite having given direction to the department heads to give us ideas for this year's budget on where to cut salaries and jobs, all six of us refused to go there. So, because you are that valued. Those of you who have, for four years, have dealt with my horrid sense of humor and put up with my kidding you, knowing that if I didn't kid you, I probably didn't like you. And so there's, you're too numerous to mention, but there's a few standouts for me personally that I want to thank. One's John Ziminek, our village attorney. He shows the utmost in calm restraint despite the fact that the times that I, like, went into lawyer mode and he didn't go, "Who's the lawyer and who's the trustee?" So, I thank him for that. He is very good at what he does and I learned a lot. Thank you, John. And Ron Searle, the village manager. This village could not run half as smoothly as it does without Ron and Ron's personality. Through whatever crisis, through whatever shortage, through whatever screaming maniac we had at a podium, Ron always stayed cool, calm, and collected and told everybody, "I will take care of it, I will solve it, I will help you," including me when I was the screaming maniac. So, I appreciate that, Ron. You are very good at what you do.
Thank you.
And John Zibley, he takes care of our building and he takes care of us and he makes sure that everything's clean and we are always comfortable and never at a loss for anything. And he's truly an unsung hero because he is just such a wonderful person. Chief Mulhern, I'm not going to ask you to come to the podium this time, but Tom and the deputy chief, especially Deputy Chief Gunther, it has been a lot of fun. I absolutely adored being the chairman of the Public Safety Committee and working with you and working with Frank Trout and working with Dave Weiss. And I had the advantage of sometimes when I'm working on one of my professional police cases, just calling one of you guys and going, "What do you think? Is this nuts or what?" And you would, you would give me your best opinion and that was always valued because the high regard that I hold you in is why I would call you. Thank you very much. And for the people that put in the hours that they put in, like there's all the employees that are here tonight, they put in probably, if you figured it out, they probably make about 10 cents an hour. We've budgeted a little more for that, but with all of the hours they put in, if you really averaged it out, they work for not a lot of money and they do so much and make this village absolutely hum. My last thank you goes to somebody that, all of our department heads are department heads because of what they do and because of their abilities to do things, that's why they are the heads of the departments. But we had a circumstance in this village and we needed a new finance director. And because we were so pleased with Spencer Parker and the work that he had done, and he had never been a finance director and he had never been an assistant finance director, and it's pretty much unheard of in municipalities to have somebody step into the role of finance director without having been moved up through the ranks and groomed for it. But because we had the utmost faith in him, we made him our finance director. He was acting finance director for a short time and then made the finance director. And he has just, he was a diamond in the rough and he has exceeded all expectations than any of us ever had for him. And so, please give him a hand because he really deserves it.[1493.12][1493.12](applause) So that said, thank you very much.
Hold on.
Okay, I guess I'm the sandwich in the middle, in the middle here.
Ladies first.
Thank you. First of all, I can't compete against what Ellen said about staff. I mean, we've got one of the best towns and the hardest-working people to help it function. So, I echo and agree 100% with everybody and everything Ellen has said. I too would like to thank my husband, who's put up with a lot, taping meetings for me when I'm gone or whether I'm here because it was easier for me to pop a DVD in if I wanted to review something in a meeting than try to find it on the station or try to get it on YouTube and figure out how to do all that. He's been my backbone, my helper, and I really appreciate everything he's done for me. And the family, it'll be nice because I'll get to see more of my grandson's games, which I've missed a lot of, and unfortunately, I miss some band concerts and he's out of band, but maybe he'll go back into band. My friends and supporters, thank you so very, very much. I would not be in the seat without you. And so, it's really, I can't thank you enough for trusting me as you did. I just have something for the current board or the new board coming in. We're public servants and this is a position of trust. So, it's, you've got to make sure you didn't come in with an agenda. Put everything aside and put Westmont first. Westmont is your biggest concern. They put you in this seat. And so, please listen to your residents out there, be available, be open so that they will see you and can approach you. And it's going to be very difficult to make decisions because you may have to be put into a decision against somebody you know, but you have to put the entire town, you are at large, put the entire town before you put your personal area, your neighborhood. Keep remembering the effect it's going to make for the entire town of Westmont and not just a small location first. And just don't let us down. So, thank you. But thank you so much for everybody and I really appreciate it. It's been great serving and we've had a great board and I'm sure it's going to continue. I'm sure they're all going to pitch in and continue with all the work we've done. Thank you.
Trustee Fleming?
You know, 12 years ago, when I started this, one of the comments that was asking me in one of the forums was, "What can I bring to this board that's different than anybody else?" And this is one of, first, this is one of many questions. It seemed like in every forum, I got a question that was so far out there, it was like, really bizarre. I sat there and I thought a minute, and this is when the village hall was still in the process of being built when we were meeting over in Westmont Center, and I thought for a minute, and I looked back at my lovely wife, Laura, and I looked, I looked back up and I said, "Well, you can set the color contrast to your TV to the color of my hair." And that was it. That's all I had to say about it. Since then, needless to say, it's gotten a little white and it's gotten a little gray. I now wear bifocals, which I didn't wear glasses when I started this. There's a lot of reading and a lot of time. I have worked with a lot of people in this village. One of the former board members that I listened to, he said two things to me, and that's Mr. Anthony Pacello, God rest his soul. He said several things. He said, "Kid, if you ever start taking things personal, get out. You can't take it personal. It's a business and that's the way it is. And number two, always vote your own conscience. Don't be swayed from what you believe is right and what is true." I've tried to live by those rules all these years. I thank everyone for the support that they've given me over the 12 years. Other board members that I've sat with, Wendy Wilson, Nancy Martins, Marie Guzzo, Steve Fidesco, Mark Forsley, and the list goes on. All fantastic boards and a lot of things have transpired in 12 years and I think we're moving at a faster pace now than what we ever have. The staff that we have in this town is heads and shoulders above anything that I can, that I can even fathom. There have been times that our village attorney, Mr. There have been times that our village attorney, Mr. Zimnack, has probably had to pull my toes back in off of the ledge because from time to time I have a tendency to get a little boisterous and I have to be told, "No, you can't say that. You say that, you're going to get in trouble." So, okay, fine. I've served with my fellow trustee Suzanne Seneca now for the whole time. And Jenny, God love you. I've walked many a miles of this town with you. And it was this lady sitting behind me in a car coming back from Chicago that goes, "You're going to run, aren't you? You're going to run, aren't you? You're going to run, aren't you?" And I finally turned around and said, "Look, if I say yes, will you shut up?"
Will you stop asking?
We go back, "Just stop asking." So, I just... And Ron, you're a man among men, and I thank you for your patience and your time and your understanding of everything that goes on. One of the biggest things that I need to say tonight is I need to thank my wife of 28 years. Now on for 12 years, missed anniversaries, missed birthdays, missed parties and functions. Well, I'm coming home, babe.
You don't have to watch them on TV anymore. See you at my birthday.
It was a lovely thing, too. Now, we have started taking in exchange students, and two of my adoptive daughters are with us tonight. Morrell, who is from Mexico, and Sol, who is from Argentina. You will continue to see students come into town. We are part of a program in which more students will be coming into your town, and I hope you will welcome them. To my fellow board members as we sit here tonight, without your help in the last four years, I don't think we could have come as far as we have. We've had our tussles, we've had our arm wrestles, and we've done a lot of work in four years. And for all of you that are coming in, I think we've given you some great tools to work with, and I hope you put them to good use. And as trustee Clevanow said, you can't have an agenda doing this. You have to do what is right for the entire town. The entire town is what you need to look at. You may have favorite parts of it, but you still have to deal with the entire town. And I will say, one of the staff members that I have become very accustomed to over the years is our public works director, Mr. Steve May. I have had the pleasure of being the chair of the Public Works Committee now for six years. And I can tell you that those people work their tails off. When it may be freezing outside and you see a water main break and you go by and you see those men standing in that water, they're out there to put it back together for you. They're on call 24/7. And as I said the other night, as you go by and you see your village workers out there working, wave at them, smile at them because they work a lot. They do a lot for this town. And they do a lot more with less because that's kind of the progress, the way things have gone in the past. And I just... I wish the best for this village. I love this village. I've lived here my entire married life. And the only thing I can say is something that Paul Harvey used to say, "Good day."
Very nice. Didn't know if you had a comment. I know you're staying.
I'd just like to thank the three of you. It's been unbelievable to work with you. It's been an honor. I've only been on four years, and you guys taught me a lot. Taught me how to work as a team. And we did have differences. And you know what? We got past them. So, I thank you for what you've taught me, and hopefully we can pass that on to the new guys coming in. Thank you.
Well said. Steve, anything?
No, I would just like to say the same thing. Thanks to the three of you. This has been the most... The biggest learning experience of my life these first two years. I've learned a lot from the three of you, and it was an honor serving with all three of you, and all three of you enjoy your retirement.
Not done yet.
We use that word loosely because you'll be busy. I too would just like to say thank you. I mean, when I... You know, as I'm reading those plaques, I'm sort of mentally adding up the years of service. And this village has been the benefactor of over 30 years of public service from these three departing trustees. So, you know, I think we can be grateful for that. And, you know, as Lee said, when you see a public works or a village staff on the street, give them a wave, well, I would recommend you do the same to these three because they have really, really made a contribution to this community. You know, we've been accused... Not accused, bad accused, but you know, people will say, "Oh, cookie cutter board. You know, everybody votes the same, yada, yada, yada." You always hear that with any board. And we have had many a split vote over the years and some very spirited discussions. But at the end of the day, it's business and, you know, respect for each other has always been there, and I'm grateful for that. And it's been wonderful serving with all of you. Thank you. And I look forward to serving with our new folks. They bring very diverse experience to the community. And I think our new mayor, Ron Gunther, Mayor Gunther, you know, will have a way of pulling that together, ensuring that we continue as a team and move this village forward. We are the progressive village, and we're not going to stand in place and run. We're going to hit the pavement and run quickly and effectively. So, we have a lot of good things ahead of us, and with that, I will entertain a motion, unless Jenny...
Can I say?
Jenny, would you like to say something?
I'd like to say something.
Yes. Of course you do.
Working with these three... Ellen, you made me laugh so many times that I hurt.
I still laugh at the shoes with this...
The shoes. I mean, there were so many different times that I reflect back and I look at you and I think, "What am I going to do? She's not going to be sitting there. I won't be able to laugh." It has been delightful, and you are such an intelligent, wonderful person to have on a board.
Thank you.
Pat?
Yeah.
You better be watching the minutes.
I know, I told her that.
I don't know what I'm going to do. I mean, Pat was like checking the minutes. She would catch all the mistakes and call me and... No, it was wonderful because I make a lot of mistakes, though. She was my ace. I always could count on her to come up with any of the mistakes. And Lee, as you said, we walked 1,000 zillion miles together. How many different elections, a lot. So, many. You've been all wonderful, and I will dearly miss you. Come back and see us. I know you will.
There's one person we haven't thanked tonight, and that's Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Oh, no.
For stepping up to the plate and for the last couple of months, being the ruler of this ship and steering the community.
Thank you.
It's been...
Certainly not.
...difficult times, and we've had a lot to accomplish, and you were there to make sure it happened. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that you placed your trust in me, and it has been a good experience for me. But thank you. Not necessary at all. But thank you so much. Ron Searle, do you want to make any comments?
Again, I would just say thank you again for the opportunity and the honor to be able to serve you and the community. And I've been here a long time, had an opportunity to work with a lot of different personalities. They've all been very interesting, and they've all brought a lot of different ideas and a lot of worthwhile things to consider. You know, I think it's always... This is my personal philosophy, but I think it's always dangerous to think that we all know everything. And I've always appreciated people who are willing to come up with ideas that are something that maybe aren't the most popular, but they're worthy of consideration. And I'm not saying that these board members have done so in the past, but I just am speaking about my experience with the village, and it's been tremendous, and I'm really going to miss you guys. Thank you.
Attorney's advocate, any comments?
No, no one wants to hear the attorney talk, but I will.
Okay, thank you. Just kidding, just kidding.
Well, both to Lee and Pat, we've worked together for many, many years. I was talking to my wife earlier about how many years it's been. I think it goes back to 1997 and 1998, and it's been a pleasure. And you guys have taught me a lot. You showed professionalism throughout, brought great ideas, and you'll be sorely missed. And for Ms. Attorney, remember when you were elected, people coming up to me, "Are you going to be able to work with Ellen? How's this dynamic going to be? You've got another municipal attorney on the board." And, you know, I always said, "It's going to work out. It's going to be great." You know, I know Ellen, and it's been better than I ever imagined. You know, despite the fact, you're vocal, you're headstrong, you had your ideas, you had your accomplishments you wanted to see, but I thought we worked together brilliantly when we had to, and it was a real pleasure. And I learned... I know you said you learned from me. I learned much from you as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I have just one comment. I hope that the volunteer canine unit will continue and serve us.
Yes.
Especially after we fitted those little bulletproof vests for them.
Yes, and they have their... The chief gave them the gold stars that... We have to keep them from chewing because they're really the stress stars, but we use them for the badge stars. But yes, the voluntary canine unit is still in business.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we will entertain a motion for a brief recess. After the recess, we will have our new trustees and new mayor sworn in and seated. So moved. Emery.
Second. Fleming.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Your night.
Trustee Clevanow.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes. Thank you. We will have a brief recess, so talk among yourselves. (APPLAUSE) This is kind of fun. I like doing that. I'm getting kind of power... I'm getting powerful here at the 11th hour. At this time, we would like to come back into regular session, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved, Scott.
Second. Nero.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clevanow.
President.
Trustee Emery.
I'm retired. I'm retired. Yes, loved daughter.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes, thank you. We are now officially back in session, and at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce to everyone Justice S. Louis Ratchke, who will be doing the official swearing-in of our new elected officials this evening. So, at this time, I would like to hand it over to Justice Ratchke. Thank you for coming.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming here and signing this bill for outstanding evidence of the fact that how much you support the village. Secondly, I also... I was talking with Ron DeWorty, and I asked him if I could say a few words about why I feel it's so important to come here tonight and swear in the new president. I started back in 1964 where I was a clerk. I actually was an attorney with my firm, Ratchke Woodwork. And we had a case that came to our office, and it was sent out by the firm of Jenner and Block. Bert Jenner, any of you remember Bert Jenner, famous attorney in Chicago? Asked us to be local counsel. And it was a case called Miller versus Fairfield Savings and Loan. And it was a case that dealt with the S.K. Healy estate, 600 acres located at the northeast corner of Cass and Ogden and west of Route 83. On the other side was a fellow by the name of Max Wilden from Wilden Herald, formerly from Kirkland Ellis. And they tried a case... They tried the case in front of Judge Bauer, William J. Bauer. I don't know if any of you have ever heard of him. William J. Bauer was the judge of... I was the sort of the lackey. I was the one doing the researching on that case. And after the case was done, both attorneys, both Max Wilden and Bert Jenner, were so impressed with Bill Bauer that they worked to get him elevated to the federal district court and thereafter on the Court of Appeals. I also was part of the group when Miller Builder was successful, our site was successful, when it came to annexations. And I can't remember all the facts of it, but they wanted to go to Hemsdale. And as you know how Hemsdale is, they had no desire to have anything west of Route 83. And so, that's why that whole area is part of Westmont. Now, since that time, I have... I helped a few of the candidates run for office here in Westmont by helping them with their petitions, making sure that they followed the law. And subsequent to one election, I was asked to become village attorney. And I said I would do it as long as all I did was special, because I had too much on my plate at the time. So, since 1979, our firm has been representing Village Westmont. And I must say that we have a stellar man now as village attorney. As you heard earlier tonight, he's liked and loved by the village board, and I think he's done a wonderful job for the residents of the village. So, that's why I am so happy to come here every four years and to swear in the new candidates or the new officials. So, at this time, I'd like to call up Ron. (APPLAUSE) Well, I'll keep it like this. I state your name.
I, Ronald J. Gunther.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
...of the office of Westmont Village Mayor.
Of the office of Westmont Village Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE) I and state your name.
I, Virginia Judy S. Tate.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As village clerk of Village Westmont.
As village clerk of the Village of Westmont.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. (APPLAUSE) I want to let everybody know that I've been swearing Jim in for a number of years. All swearing in. Now, if you three would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I and then state your name.
James Addington.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As village... As Westmont trustees.
As Westmont trustees.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. (APPLAUSE) Thank you, welcome. (APPLAUSE)
Thank you, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Thank you.
(LAUGHING)
Thank you, welcome.
(APPLAUSE) Mr. Mayor, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Thank you.
Wait for Jim.
Go get him.
What do I do, Sue?
No.
Ask Jenny to please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Attington.
Here.
Trustee Parker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Seminick.
Here.
I'm not calling.
I wouldn't, you don't need to.
They all, we all are, they dug all the...
If we can follow the agenda, I think we'll just go right down the way they're listed and give all those who are newly appointed tonight an opportunity to speak. So Jenny, you are leadoff. You are.
First, I want to thank all the residents who voted for me. I will do my best to serve you well. I also need to thank my husband, who I have neglected for several weeks. He's had to keep himself and Brett fed, so during this past time. So thank you, Jerry, the lovely flowers and everything. He sticks by me even though he wants to kick me half the time. I also am blessed to have wonderful employees in the clerk's office. My deputy clerk, collector, Carrie Kamak, is the best deputy clerk in the state of Illinois, probably the whole country. I cannot say enough good things about Carrie. He keeps smiling as those FOIA's keep rolling in, and he keeps doing his job so efficiently and so quickly. And also with us tonight, I have Kathy Datillo, who, she's standing back there, and if you could see her, everybody, she has this beautiful smile that she shines on every resident, even on the phone. I see her talking to people, and she's smiling, and as soon as they walk in, she's smiling at them. And Jackie, who works tirelessly on water billing and everything. She is not here tonight, but her birthday's tomorrow, so we'll tell her happy birthday. And there are not enough kind words that I can say about our departments. They all know I love them dearly. Our police and fire department, public work, streets and waters, I hug those guys all the time, they're so great. Economic development and finance. And Glenn, I didn't forget you, and their IT who keeps our phones and computers and everything working. So they're the easiest group in the world to work with. They all do their jobs wonderfully. There's not enough words to say about them. They're top drawer employees. We're a blessed community. And I can't leave out our leader, the glue, our village manager, who holds us all together. And you do, Ron, you're so modest, and there are just not enough kind words to say about you and all you do for the village. You're here endlessly. And of course, I love our attorney. I call him one of my kids. Does such an outstanding job and is so easy to work with. John, you're the best.
Thanks, Sue.
And in closing, I just want to say, it has been wonderful to sit next to Bill Ron for 13 years. He has been a great mayor, and I miss him, and I wish him the best. And he's just a super guy. And Sue, for taking over as Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you.
You ran wonderful meetings.
Thank you.
You did a wonderful job. And lastly, welcome to Jim and Harold, who I've known for a long time. There you are, Harold. Jim's over here. Harold's worked on my house the last several years. And Jim, I've known since I moved to town, and his kids and his grandkids, and basketball games and all of that. And this last election, I got to know Bruce Barker very well. He is just a great guy. His wife, Moya, and Bree, they became family to me. I spent a lot of time with you guys, and you all will love working with them. They're great people. And as for our new mayor, he has always been a great leader, and I know his finest hours, days and years are ahead. He will also be a great, great, great mayor. And thank you.
Jim, it's your turn.
What if I said nothing?
That would be a first.
It would be heart attacks galore.
Half the audience would fall down.
First and foremost, of course, to thank the folks that voted for me and gave me support during this last election. It was, it's been a while since I had been out walking the streets, and I was glad to get back in, because I learned a lot from just knocking on doors and talking to people again, and a lot about our town and about the people who live in it. To my own family, to Lisa and Jim, and my four granddaughters, and Jeannie, my granddaughter, and Brian, my grand, my granddaughter, Jeannie, my daughter-in-law, and Brian, my son-in-law. I thank them for their support, and we're a great family. And where's Samantha?
There she is.
Stand up, Samantha.
She is.
Samantha's my third granddaughter. The one's working, and the other one's at Illinois State, so Samantha's the token, and the other one was asleep. So Samantha's my token granddaughter. I'm looking forward to getting back into, into the fray. I've been, was here for so long before, and then kind of backed away a little bit, and maybe I can do some good. It's such a pleasure tonight to see some of the folks that came up, you know, for Ron and for me. I mean, former manager Ray Botch is here from down from Mount Vernon Way, and I don't want to forget, let's, yeah, let's give Ray a hand. Let's not forget, in the back of the room, the wife of Frank Bellaree, who did a phenomenal job for this community as mayor and park commissioner and a lot of other things. But Arlene, please stand. For tonight, and it's such a pleasure to have her and them. And again, there are so many friends in this room that are here tonight, and again, I can't thank you all enough. Most, some of the staff, a lot of the staff I've worked with before, I'm looking forward to working with them again. As far as the folks on the board, most of you I have known in one capacity or another over the last 20 or 25 years. Ron and I have been friends since he moved into town and went to work for the Park District and joined the Lions Club. And Harold, he did work on my house, too, so. And Bob, I go down to his business, and we talk all the time. I'm looking forward to working with you, Steve, and I know you a little bit. And Bruce and I got to know each other very well. Knew him from the Park District before, from the Park Board before, and I think this is going to be an exciting time. There's some great things that are coming for this village, and it isn't going to be easy. But I know one thing, if this kind of support is there from all of you that are here tonight and watching, it's going, it is going to be easy, because we'll have you to lean on to help. And I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Bruce, it's your turn.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm honored to be here as a newly-elected public servant. I'd like to thank God. I'd like to thank my wife, Moira, who's always been so good to me, my daughters, Brianna and Ainsley, who make everything worth it, my extended family and friends, all of whom I'm blessed to know. I'd also like to take a minute to thank all those that voted for me, and let you and the rest of Westmont residents know that for the next four years, I will do everything I can to help improve our village. I would like to commend former mayor Bill Ron and the three trustees who departed, who are departing, Pat Klebeneau, Ellen Emery, and Lee Fleming. Thank you for yourself, this year as a service to Westmont. You've built a solid foundation on which to begin our future. And finally, to the current trustees and our new mayor, I'd like to just say, let's get to work.
Harold.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the people of Westmont that supported me, the business community. The outpouring was overwhelming. During this period, once Jim had asked me if I was interested in getting into this ballgame, we agreed. My wife, who is my backbone and keeps me grounded, we talked about it many hours, and we decided it was the right time and the right thing to do at this point for Westmont. Unfortunately, my wife had some medical setbacks during that time, and she really stuck by me and gave all she could give. And to her, I owe this, and I thank you for being my backbone and putting up with all the hours and the campaigning and all the extra she did. So thank you, Tracy. For those of you who have not met Annika yet, you will in this next four years. I guarantee next time, nobody will question who that is, okay? She'll leave her impression. To the village, we are really looking forward. We've been meeting, the three of us, the four of us, with Ron. We've been meeting prior to this, and I've always been impressed with what village, the village does as a whole, from the street department, water department, police department, and fire. But getting to know Ron Searle over the last couple of weeks, you really get an appreciation of what goes on in this building. And I will say, as a businessman and as a citizen, I didn't have a clue of what Ron did. And I am looking forward to working with you, Ron. It is clear that he is in good, the village is in good hands with Ron at the helm. And to the new trustees, I know we've already been working great together, looking forward to working with the existing, and I think this is going to go down as probably one of the best mayors we've ever had. So I'm grateful to be a part of it. Really feel blessed today, and I thank you all. Thank you.
I'm last, but I do have to start out with saying one thing. The three trustees that just went off the board put a lot of work in, a lot of dedication to this community. They almost blew it for me. If you would have said one more missed holiday or birthday, my wife was going to pull me back and say, "Don't do it." So, but you left it like that, and I do appreciate all the time you have put in. I have prepared a little bit of something to say. I am happy to be here this evening so that I can express my sincere gratitude to everybody who have supported my candidacy for mayor. This would include everybody from the voters to my family, who are, my lovely wife, Toni, and my son, Brad, and Natalie are in the front row. I have other relatives here that came by to see me sworn in. The idea of running for office is something that I've had in my mind for quite a while, all the way back, I think, when Frank Bellaree mentioned to me at some point, he said, "You should think about running for mayor." And with the encouragement of the community, I did make that decision to run. I would also like to thank everyone else who ran for office this time, and those who are stepping down for their commitment to our village. It is with great anticipation that I look forward to honor the serving of the residents of Westmont as their mayor. I've been an active member of this community since 1977. I have dedicated my life to Westmont for over 35 years. That said, I'm asking the entire community, the residents and the business owners alike, to join me and the village to work together as a team, a team that strives to make Westmont a better place to live, work, shop, and play. With that challenge, I ask everyone to be positive in their approach and focus on ideas instead of complaints. Certainly, there will be criticisms, but it's how we voice our criticisms and our commitment to be part of the solution that will determine productive outcomes. If we work together, if we keep the betterment of the entire community in mind at all times, then there is nothing we cannot achieve. I feel very confident in the makeup of this board and look forward to providing the quality of leadership to not only the trustees, but to this village staff for the next four years. Thank you. Ask somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
Refreshments. Want to mention the refreshments?
Oh, I was going to mention, there's refreshments. I told you, Sue's going to, why don't you move here? Jenny, over here, you're here, you know, but there are refreshments after the meeting is adjourned. It's in, I don't even know what we call that room.
The anti-room.
The unfinished room?
The anti-room. We call it the anti-room. You could call it the anti-room.
The unfinished room, there's refreshments, but, and everyone's welcome to attend. I think we're all going to go and socialize a little bit, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move Scott.
Second, Nero.
And do I ask you to make a roll call?
Go ahead.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Attington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
I'm used to being Mayor Pro Tim.
Whatever.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
And thank you for all coming. Meeting adjourned.
Yay. Nice job.